Okay, we're live. Okay. This time, we need to return to open session and need a vote to come out of executive session.
Chairman, I move that we come out of executive session.
Motion been made. So, second, barber, second, whoever, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. This time, I'll ask Mr. Johnson to lead us in pledge allegiance to the flag and Ms. Sauls to lead us now over to the next implication.
I pledge allegiance. To the flag. Ready? Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
Stand. One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Saul.
Most kind and gracious heavenly followers, we humbly bow our heads. We give you thanks and praise, dear Lord, for this day that you've made for us. We ask, dear Lord, that we make the most of this day, that the work we do will be pleasing in your sight, that all the decisions we make will benefit our county and our citizens, dear Lord. We ask for your strength and guidance and your wisdom and your knowledge, dear Lord, for our, for our home, our county, our state, and our nation in this world that we live in, dear Lord. We ask that you lay your healing hand upon us. You know the, the prayers and challenges we all have and that we face, those who are in need, those who are sick, dear Lord. We ask that you protect them and give them your strength, dear Lord. There are many people, dear Lord, with needs, and we ask, dear Lord, that those needs can be met by your healing hand, dear Lord. We just thank you, dear Lord, for the opportunity that we have to serve our county. We ask, dear Lord, that the work that we do will be pleasing in your sight. We ask these things in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. At this time, do we have anything that we need to act upon coming from executive session?
Chairman, I move that we authorize the county attorney and/or the county administrator to execute the legal services contract as modified relative to the Savannah River site.
Okay. I have a motion. Motion by Mr. Johnson and a second by Councilwoman Clark. All in favor? Or does any other comments? Any? From any councilman? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Saul has made the motion. Councilwoman Clark, second. All, if any corrections or anything that, deletions, anything of the minute, agenda. If not, everybody in favor, signify by saying aye, raising your right hand.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay. Our approval of the minutes of the October the 5th, 2020 meeting.
Make a motion that approve the minutes of October the 5th with any necessary correction.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Sauls. If any of the discussion, anything we need to, any changes you need to know. Not, all in favor, signify by saying aye, raising your right hand.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay. At this time, we're gonna have a presentation, fiscal projection for government analysis, and is presented tonight by Robert T. Carey from Clemson University's Regional Economic Analysis Laboratory. Glad to have you with us tonight, Dr. Carey.
Thank you, Councilman Etheridge. It's very nice to be here and appreciate the opportunity to appear before you guys. So I hope you will find this interesting, and I look forward to any questions you might have. See, able to share my screen here. I'll go and jump into the slideshow. There we go. Oops. Technology. Okay. Of course, I'm, my classes are all, have an online component now, so I'm, you'd think I'd be used to this technology by now, but apparently I'm not. Okay, so. Okay, so this is a fiscal projection, again, like you said, from Jasper County, and this includes the school district as well as the county government, and also includes the municipal governments of Hardyville and Ridgeland. And, and this actually follows up a study that was done in 2006 by some colleagues of mine at the, at the Strom Thurmond Institute of Clemson. And, and these, and the study actually used a different methodology than what I used. Doctors Taylor and Molnar, who have since moved on to greener pastures. They, they used a, basically used peer analysis to compare Jasper County to similar, similarly sized areas, and then use a projected population growth to actually determine how many staff would be necessary, what new facilities were necessary, and that sort of thing. My view is, my version is a little bit different. I refer to it as a view from 30,000 feet. So what I actually do is I actually build off of the, the certified annual financial reports, the CAFERS, as they're called, and, and actually project based on past spending, but using Jasper County itself as the standard. So, so I'm gonna go through a little bit of the methodology I use pretty quickly, and then I'll get to the results, because I know that's the part everybody wants to see. So hopefully, everyone will stay awake for the, the methodology part. So I always joke that I have actually discovered a cure for insomnia, and it's actually me. So, so the, what I use, the main tool that I use is the Remy PR Plus modeling engine. Remy is one of the largest and, and really most advanced economic modeling engines that we have right now. And we use it at Clemson, and it's a, it's a, I call it the Cadillac of economic modeling and economic models. It's a, and what it does, it actually allows us to project for multiple years, and it projects a lot of different metrics, including not only economic impact in terms of jobs, output, or total sales, income, all that sort of thing. It also produces projections of population growth and, and other things of that nature, including property values it projects, which of course, those, all those come in handy for the model, as we'll see. And so, so it's in a very advanced model, and it uses historic data to build what it calls a baseline, and then you use that baseline projection for the future. And the baseline, of course, only goes up to as long as the, as federal data is available, so BEA, BLS data, that sort of stuff is used to actually build this baseline. At the time that I did it, it only went up to about, I believe, 2015 or 2016. So, so I was actually able to get some information from Southern Carolina Regional Development Alliance, and they were very kind to actually provide me with, with projected new investment and new jobs that were actually expected to come into Jasper County. So I was able to actually update the baseline in order to actually get a more accurate read going into the future. Then I use a model that I actually developed called a fiscal impact analysis tool. And this is actually a fully customizable tool that I use to actually build projections out of some of the metrics that I get out of the Remy model. So I plug the, the projections I get from Remy into my fiscal impact analysis tool, and I use that to actually project the future values from the CAFERS, like I said. And then the analysis actually gives us a future revenue and expenditure streams broken down by categories, just however it actually is broken down according to CAFER, actually customize it to each. And each one is, obviously, the school district CAFER is very different, and the, the accounting report is very different from the accounting report you from the county, and even two municipalities are different from the county from each other. So I had to customize it each one of those. And so I project the expenditures, revenues, and then the net expenditures, which basically just your revenues minus expenditures to determine if you have a deficit or surplus or balance. And I did limit the analysis to general fund items. I will mention a couple of other items later on, but, but as far as actually making projections, I'm really focused on the general fund. Okay, so the data that I use from Remy to actually project the fiscal model is actually using revenue projections. Based on, the main ones are population, which determines a lot of spending especially, but also does a lot of revenue as well, especially when you're dealing with the, I'll talk about a little more detail in a minute. And, and then residential, non-residential capital stock is what Remy calls it. It's actually property tax base. Basically, it's the value of property within the county, residential and, and non-residential, which excludes commercial and industrial. And then, of course, output, which is total sales, that of course provides some of the economic information I use to build that, those portions of the model. There are a few items that did not show a clear trend that actually I just averaged over historic years, but I did, I was always, I'm always very careful to make my assumptions, so to make sure the model is, I use the term reasonably conservative. I actually use the term, the principle that accountants use called the prudence principle, which basically is the idea that if you have two guesses, one is more conservative and one is more kind of pie in the sky, definitely go with the more conservative assessment. And so, by reasonably conservative, I mean, being very careful not to overestimate expenditures and not to underestimate revenues. Not overestimate, rather than underestimate expenditures, I said that backwards. Okay, so. Okay, it also assumes no changes to funding formulas, including millage rates after 2019. And, and one thing you'll notice, all dollar values are held constant for inflation. So, so that's one thing I'll probably point out again later on. Okay, so that's the basic methodology. And of course, the, you know, nobody expects a global pandemic. Yeah, you kind of, I actually wrote in the report that, you know, this kind of a caveat that says that, okay, we, this doesn't take into account what we call exogenous events, things like a national recession. It's a shame I didn't actually say a global pandemic, because I could then sell myself off as, as, you know, tell the future. But, but basically, you can see, obviously, this plummet here that we saw in, beginning in March of this year, is clearly going to affect our projections. So what I'm actually gonna show you in the next few slides is that, is actually going to include the projections I made before the pandemic, because I actually finished the analysis before the pandemic struck. And then some updates that I've made since the pandemic that I'm calling preliminary, just because we just don't know how quickly, we're in uncharted territory, so we don't know how quickly we're really gonna recover from this pandemics, from the recession that it's caused. So, so I'll, I'll have some revised projections showing the effects of the pandemic on my other projections. So you'll see those in the future slides. Okay, so the actual projections here. Okay, Jasper County School District. The, the model largely is built off of enrollment growth, at least as far as the expenditure side goes. And again, a few revenues are built off enrollment growth as well, like federal funds and that sort of thing. Enrollment growth is actually a little tricky here, and I've run into this in school districts I've done before. Basically, the school district normally, well, quote normally, like I said, it's happened in a few other places as well, but what you would expect is school district enrollment to increase along with school age population. And of course, the Remy model that I use actually projects population by age group, so I can actually project the, the, the school age population according to different age groups, like elementary age, middle school, high school age. And, but the trick is Jasper County, since there are two state charter schools down there, and there actually are a couple of fairly large private, one particularly large private school down there as well. The, the enrollment growth does not really match the population growth from school age population. So, so actually, the county school district's enrollment actually grows a little bit slower than the actual population growth. So I had to adjust for that, and I just did that based on historic trends. Advalorm, which is property tax revenue growth, that actually is relatively flat. There is some increase, but is relatively flat over time, and we'll see that on, on the next slide and how it impacts revenues. And so expenditures are projected to grow faster than revenues. And I'm gonna come back to Act 388 later on, but I will mention, you know, which I'm sure is no surprise to anyone, that Act 388 definitely has an impact on the projections as well. So we'll see that on my conclusion slide. I'll talk about that a little bit more, because of the effects, the, the others as well. Okay, so the top one, for all of these, and I wish I could get rid of that bar up at the top, I'm sure it's blocking part of the screen, but, but the top screen is actually the, the projections I made before the COVID pandemic struck. This is February, when I actually had these done, so I had to come back and adjust for it after the, the pandemic hit. So, so that kind of put, put a delay on actually getting the final results out. And then the bottom one is going to be the, the post-COVID, the adjustment with the effect of the pandemic included. That'll be the true on all of the slides here. So the top one, you see, actually, the bottom line here, oops, is initially, this is revenue, the, I'm sorry, the expenditure line. What turns blue here is projected expenditure. So everything to the left of that, the orange and the very lines are historic, and then through 2019, I had historic, historic data. And then, starting in 2020, you have the projections. You see that the revenue, which is the green line here, is relatively flat. You see the expenditure is increasing really fairly quickly, that going along with enrollment growth primarily. Depend, the, the basically break even point, the point at which you essentially cross into, into deficit territory is the, is about 2022, according to the previous projections. The new projections, COVID basically bumped that up a year. So now I have to have it projected to be going to deficit territory by 2021. Now, we'll throw another caveat out here, another, another disclaimer, I guess we could say, and that is that this does not take into account anything that wasn't in the CAFER. So I had to kind of go back and just pull the CAFER back up and make the adjustments from COVID. But, but there was some emergency funding that went out to school districts from state, some CARES money that went out. And, and of course, there are also some additional expenses that were included as well, and having some, some of the remediation measures. These aren't included in this. So that's why, one of the reasons for calling this preliminary as well. Okay, so. The county government, this actually have a, project the population for Jasper County to continue to grow pretty well, pretty good population growth. I expect population to exceed 37,000 by 2025, and that is, by the way, that is post-COVID. So that, this is actually the projection after the, after adjusting for the, the pandemic. Again, modest growth in the property tax base, and expenditures do grow a little faster than revenue, but only slightly. So you actually, I'm projecting you actually continue to see surpluses for the next few years. So. Originally, again, the top one is pre-COVID. Originally, if I get my pointy to work here, I had the actual, basically, surpluses continued about 2024, 2025, based on current millage rates and everything. With COVID, that actually bumps back to 2023. So essentially, knocked about two years off of the, off of the time before the break even point there. So again, you see the historic lines, you see like a, you know, expenditures kind of approached revenue levels here in 2017, and this is off of the historic CAFERS, and then you got more of a surplus in 2018. I project the surpluses to continue again until around 2023, given the current situation, again, assuming a certain rate of recovery. Staffing needs, this is another thing that Mr. Fuldrum asked me to do, and, and so again, this is something that was done on the 2006 report, so he wanted to update this. And actually, based on the, the population projections, and by the way, I kind of, I kind of laughed at myself about this earlier. The 2006, of course, we had this study from, that my colleagues did, and like, within about a year, we went into the, the Great Recession. This time, I did this study, and, and within a couple of months, we actually went into a major recession. So it's got me a little paranoid, but the, but basically, the, the population projections that were done in 2006 model were based on pre-recession models. And so, so there were, actually, there's a much faster rate of population growth that was projected in 2006. And so, so kind of adjusting for that with the, with the staffing needs, you guys are actually pretty well on track right now, from what they projected would be necessary. So what I'm projecting now, fire and rescue combined, 2018 value is about 43 employees, projected 2025 needs, needs to add about 60, based on projected population growth. Sheriff's Department, the, the value in 2018 was, was 40, and then the projected 2025 need was 56. So basically, you need to add, what, 17 fire and rescue and, and 16 sheriff's deputies, so, and another staff. So, so that's the staffing needs projection. The break even home value was another one that Mr. Fuldrum asked for, and that was, again, something to be updated from the 2006 model. And this one, actually, we'll see this in the municipal models as well, and, and the home value, had, break even home value is actually increased by, by a good bit, especially in the municipalities. The break even home value is essentially, what is the, the amount of property tax revenue, or what is the value of the house that is necessary to generate sufficient property tax value to cover the cost that the household generates for, an additional household generates for the county? So a new construction, obviously, is gonna be a little bit more, because you have to do sewer tap, stuff like that. And so, new construction, a new household to count, costs the county about $908, according to my, my, my model. And an existing structure, just a new household moving into an existing structure, would cost 862. And I'm assuming two and, two and a half people, people per household, which is from the census average from the 2017 census, American Community Survey data. So the amount of home value needed to generate that kind of property tax value would be $140,000 home value to, for, for existing structure, 147,005 for new construction. And yeah, we'll see these numbers again, these, again, on the municipal models here. Okay, city of Hardyville. I, Hardyville, I'm projecting Hardyville's had a lot of population growth, actually, pretty explosive almost, really, over the past few years. I'm projecting that actually to continue. And so the Hardyville city population, I'm expecting to reach about 13,000 by 2025. And that's assuming, I'm, I'm assuming nothing, nothing like annexation or anything like that. This is just normal population growth. And so, and so that's going to cause some growth in the property tax base, particularly residential, but, but still fairly modest. And by the way, the, the property tax growth numbers are fairly conservative. Remy basically bases those off of assume new construction and, and new usage and that sort of thing. It's not really, it's not really taking into account normal property appreciation, so it's slightly conservative. So, so again, that's, that's part of this, making this model a more conservative model. And, and again, we are holding constant for inflation as well. So this is not including, property tax base growth is not including inflation effects. Expenditures are driven largely by population growth, will grow faster than revenues, and we'll see on the next slide the effect of that. I will note about developer fees, which again, this is not part of the general fund, so I didn't include in the analysis, but there have been some budget shortfalls the past couple of years in Hardyville, and I project those to continue. And, but the developer fees have actually been sufficient over the past couple of years, since they've been instituted to actually cover that shortfall. So I'm throwing that in there, just kind of as a disclaimer. So when we see these, these gaps opening up here, and really, there's a huge difference between the pre and post-COVID models here. You see the expenditures go up a little bit more, because we actually, I'm actually projecting a little more population growth after COVID than I did before, because of what we're seeing, people relocating away from urban areas. The Jasper, Jasper County appears to be an area that's gonna be attractive to people relocating. So, so we're expecting more of a population growth actually after COVID than we were before. So the expenditure actually goes up a little bit more post-COVID than it did before. And the, but the property tax space actually is a little bit flatter, or rather, the tax, tax revenue, or revenue source is a little bit flatter. So we've got more deficits opening up, but again, so far, those developer fees have covered that. So, so we're not talking anything dire here. Break even home value for Hardyville. Okay, this is one where we saw a big increase from the last, the last model in 2006. And this is actually the cost of a new household to town for new construction is about $2,600. An existing structure where new families, the area in, existing structures about 1,900, almost $2,000 per household. Again, the same assumptions, 200 people per household. And so the home value needed to generate sufficient property tax revenue, again, this is just for property tax revenue, is $1,424,500 for existing structure, 564,000 for a new construction. So again, pretty high property values necessary. I'm gonna talk about what I think might be part of the driver there in a minute. Okay, Ridgeland. Ridgeland population growth has been very flat over the past several years, and I'm projecting that trend's actually going to continue. Little population growth, but not a lot. Property value will actually, because it's not a lot of population growth, we're not gonna see a lot of increase in residential property, property values, again, not including inflation effects, but just real property values, I'm expecting to be pretty flat. And actually, it depreciate a little bit because, actually, good, because of depreciation. So property tax, revenues are gonna, I'm projecting, go down some. However, Ridgeland has done very well with its accommodations tax and local option sales tax. They've gotten a lot of revenue from that, and that's really done a lot to keep them in the, in the black, in the, in their, in their budgets. Now, that's a blessing, but it can be a curse during a recession. Their, their property tax, or rather, their ATAX and lost revenues, I'm projecting to actually go down for a little while. And so that's going to create some, some, some issues with the revenue side, but I'm still projecting to maintain pretty much in the surplus territory. 2020, they, is a little close. I have a small surplus there, but that could potentially be a small deficit. But again, based on current projections for recovery, I'm expecting the, the ATAX and lost revenue to actually start recovering that some, and bringing that back up, so they have, again, back into the surplus territory. Break even home value for Ridgeland, again, is much higher than the last model. New construction cost the town about $2,200, about a little less than $2,000 for an existing structure. And. The property tax value, property value necessary to generate enough, property tax will be between 370 for an existing structure and 411,000 for a new construction. Okay, so the conclusion, I just want to kind of talk a little about Act 388 and talk about how that's actually affecting these projections. Of course, Act 388, the, the most egregious example of Act 388's effect, and, and I presented this actually for a similar assessment for Lancaster County a couple of years ago. And as I actually was telling this to the school board, I see all the heads nod as I said this. But school, Act 388 has been very difficult for school districts, especially school districts in primarily residential areas. So. So Jasper County, although Jasper County does have a good, a good bit of industry and new stuff coming in, it is primarily a residential area. And so the issue is that Act 388, in that it stops school districts from assessing general fund property taxes on primary residences, essentially disconnects the source of the demand for additional schooling, public schools, from the source of that demand, from the source of the revenue. And so you have new people moving into the area, a lot of whom have kids, and, and these children, of course, that increases the demand for public schooling. And the issue is, you can't tax the ones that are actually creating the demand because of Act 388. You have, they have to rely on commercial and industrial and rental property. And so. So that's a, that's a big issue with the school district, and that's a big reason why we see the results that we see. I've actually done some, well, this is a really good example, some other studies I've done as well, that has shown a real disconnect between how the county, county government is projected to do versus how the school district is projected to do. And the county governments generally do a lot better, because they are able to tax those new residential, residential structures coming in, and new residences. So, so the effect of the school district is, is obviously pretty, pretty egregious. The effect on the county and municipal governments is also there, and that really has to do with the, the break even home values. This is what I believe is actually largely behind the big increase in the break even value that I'm projecting, especially for the two municipalities. Because you have a 15% assessment cap under Act 388. And, and of course, my models, you know, actually don't, are held constant for inflation, so we aren't seeing any 15% increases. And again, my property tax projections are, are somewhat conservative, but in years past, we've seen, more than likely, you've had several years in which you've had a more than 15% increase over the five-year reassessment period in property taxes, but unable to actually assess that, to be able to actually capture that additional income. And so. so I believe that along with just the effect of inflation is actually what is actually causing those break even values to go up so dramatically. And then, of course, COVID nineteen, and in fact, both revenues and expenditures, as we saw to differing degrees. Revenues are largely being impacted by the, the recession, the impact on decreases in business activity. And although I believe your area is actually doing relatively well compared to the rest of the country. As far as actually some of these, like particularly the already Hardyville ATAX and even, even I'm projecting decreases in a tax and LST revenue. They're not doing as badly as some places are. And and also the expenditure part is going to be affected largely by population, which I'm again, projecting to be affected by people relocating from urban, heavily urbanized areas. So, that is my presentation. This is the, what I call my shameless plug slide, and then I'll open up for questions. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Carey. Do we have any questions from any of the council?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions I'd like to ask Dr. Carey.
Okay. Councilman.
Dr. Carey, thank you for, for putting this study together for us to, to review with you. Since you left off with Act three eighty-eight, I want to pick up from there and just make a couple of assessments. I've served as the chairman for the Southern Carolina Alliance, which is the Regional Economic Development Alliance. You mentioned earlier for some of your data and economic development has been one of my, if not my top priority since first becoming a council member. But I know Act three eighty-eight shifted the school tax burden from the homeowner to the business owner in the school district is very dependent upon new revenue from economic development projects. And we, we know the importance of that. But attracting new economic development, you know, every taxing entity generally has to agree to give up some type of revenue in order to land a business here to relocate a company here in our, in our county or any county in the state, that's kind of standard procedure. But we've got to remember that it's much harder for the school district to do this than for a county or a town. Because Act three eighty-eight, you know, all of the school districts, operational revenues come from businesses. So, that's why we have to focus on that and not more so rooftops, because it's totally different for the school district versus the county or the municipalities. But going back to the development agreements, it's been my understanding, and, and I don't believe anything's changed, but I just wanted to hear it from you that, you know, the funds are for capital outlay only. Not for operational uses such as you can build a fire department, but you can't use those funds to hire firefighters. Is that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and also I really, this model just really looked at the, the general revenue side. So, mainly, I'm looking mainly at the, the paying the firefighter side, not so much necessarily the, the, the capital investment of actually building, say, a fire department or something like that. So, there might be some, some purchases involved in that, but.
And I know you mentioned like break even pricing for housing in the, in the municipalities. But that, does that mean if you have houses that are constructed below the break even price that the jurisdiction is actually paying more for services than they're receiving in taxes?
Yes, yeah, that's true. And, and that's been a, actually, that was a finding for the two thousand and six model as well, that residential development, unless it is, does reach a certain level of value, generally does not pay for itself. So, yeah.
Well, you know, given that the residential development does not pay for school operations, I mean, don't most growing counties adopt impact fees for an example for residential growth? So, that residents in high growth areas are paying for something towards school infrastructure?
Yeah, yes, sir, yeah.
And is that standard procedure that you've seen, have you seen much of that throughout, you know, the different counties in the state with the impact?
I've actually done, I've seen a couple that have done that. I believe Beaufort County next to you guys has done it. And, and I forget, I don't remember, I think Lancaster might have, I, I don't remember offhand, but possibly Lancaster.
It's my understanding that most counties are doing that, you know? Using those impact fees to help offset expenses to school districts.
Yeah, and these are just the ones that I've actually worked with. So, those are the ones I have the first-hand knowledge of, yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time and thank you for what you've done.
Yeah, thanks. And I will say, I will say an amen to what you said at the beginning as well, so.
Good, thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir, just one question. Your figures on existing, a new family in the existing house, does that, is that referring to vacant housing? I mean, surplus housing or whatever the right word would be?
I guess the, yeah, I'd had, I mean, I guess the scenario there, most people moving in is going to be new housing. But I would think that, you know, sometimes maybe you might have, maybe an existing family maybe builds another house somewhere else and then they sell their existing house to a new resident moving in. Maybe that kind of a situation, so. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I might bring up one, one other point too. In Dr. Carey's presentation, if he goes back a couple of slides and you look at the price points for the homes. Yeah, let's.
About the county.
I think some of them were in the southern part of the county. I think they were in the mid four hundred thousand range.
Right.
There's very few homes in that price point, four twenty. Majority of the homes that are new construction or not are less than that, especially in Sun City, Margarita, Hampton Point. I mean, you, you do have a few over that price point, but the majority are not. So, the price points, those properties are, are the majority are below that figure.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, 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 those are pretty expensive houses, dude, yeah, so.
Yeah, which means the, the tax, I guess as far as the, the cost of providing services would be even greater if the price point on the homes were less. Because you're receiving less money to pay for those services, government, municipal county, however you want to look at it, but yeah, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Right, could you kind of extrapolate this for us for apartment dwellers or rental income?
Right, yeah.
Distinction?
Yeah, rental income, now rental income, of course, one benefit of rental income or rental property is that that actually is not covered under three eighty-eight as far as the exemption for school taxes. So, that can actually be taxed by school, so that would help the school district. Now, now rental property tax, tax revenue, rental property. A lot of rental property would probably fall, be more highly valued if it's like, if this is multifamily. If it's like a single family or duplex or something, probably not. But, but then again, you have multiple families coming in. So, yeah, I didn't explicitly think about rental properties in this particular part of the model. But, but my guess is probably that would, that wouldn't really pay for itself in the sense of, you know, you're having multiple count families coming in. So, you're having multiple demanders for more government services. But yet, they're not generating that much more property tax value, even though it's assessed at the six percent rate. But, yeah, of course, that would be again, the assessment, assessment ratio would be different as well. So, yeah, I didn't explicitly think about it in those terms. But my guess is the rental people, rental families moving in probably wouldn't cover the cost either, just because of how many there are.
So, a new mouth to feed is still a new mouth to feed.
Right, exactly, exactly. Yeah, people still demanding services, building public safety, fire, all that kind of stuff, so, yeah.
Councilwoman Clark?
No, he's explaining everything. And my concern has been ditto to Marty. You gotta have funds to operate in schools. And Act three eighty-eight took it out the bucket and just slammed it up against the wall. Because for a while there, we didn't experience that many businesses in Jasper County. And if they were here, they were very moderate with funds. And now we still having problems with getting funds for our schools. We can't forget about them. We got to have a way to pump funds into our school, schools so that our children can be educated better. So, I agree with Tom and Marty with what they were saying.
Dr. Brantley, you on with us? Councilwoman Brantley, are you on with us?
Going on for the night.
Okay. Anyway, I, I.
You hear me?
Yes, I heard, yeah. Home value needed to generate sufficient property tax revenue concerns me. It does concern me, just like Marty was saying, and rental property concerns me. But we've seen this report for the first time tonight, Dr. Carey. And I'm sure there's going to be some additional questions that people will want to ask you, our council. So, some people from the other municipalities, when they see this report, they'll probably be wanting some questions answered for them too. But we appreciate you coming and, and we appreciate what you're doing tonight. And everybody can see by the scenery behind you that you're not sitting on the beach.
Unfortunately.
Anyway, we do appreciate it. And Andy, do you have any questions or anything, any concerns that you would like to make a statement about?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, I believe Dr. Brantley was trying to get your attention.
Not hearing you, Andy.
No, sir, I don't, but I think, believe Dr. Brantley was trying to get your attention.
Oh, he was, okay, well, where's Dr. Brantley? Go ahead, Dr. Brantley.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now, yeah.
Okay, very good. One question, if I may please. I note, Dr. Carey, in your analysis, you shared with us expenditures and revenue and projected revenue. But you did not attach a, a cost to them. Is there any particular reason you did not put, attach a cost to each one?
A cost to.
Projected cost to the expenditures, the revenues and projected revenue that we will be getting?
Oh, you mean in terms of the cost of the economy or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, I did do, I did do, I actually based the projections off of economic activity. I did not do a dynamic model in the sense of actually feeding the tax revenue and expenditures back into the model to get an economic impact of those. So, so this, this isn't a fully dynamic model in that regard. But that's a really good, that's a really good question. That's, that's, I actually have done that with something before, but I just, I didn't do it with this particular, these studies.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Any other questions? No other questions again, Dr. Carey. We are delighted to have you with us tonight, and we're delighted to have this report in our hand. And I'm sure that you'll be getting some more questions. Thank you again.
Happy to answer. Thank you all so much. Have a good night.
This time we go floor to the public. Public comments, of course, are done by email. And do we have any public comments at this time?
No, sir, we didn't receive any public comments for this meeting.
No public comments, do we know? Thank you very much, Wanda. Okay, resolutions, resolutions, we have none. Ordinances. Andy, David Teller, you gonna do his?
Yes, sir, I, I'm happy to do that. Mr. Tetter had to leave for an emergency, so I will pick this up. Ordinance A is a proposed third reading of a multi-county industrial park ordinance. This is the third reading, you've seen it before, it involves the Trask Solar Farm. Specifically called the Trask East Solar Farm, where you would be the partner county with Beaufort County on that project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but we're respectfully requesting council's consideration of third reading, third and final reading this evening.
Okay, this is the third reading, we've seen it twice and nothing have changed that I know of. So, I have a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion been made by Councilman Saul, I have a second. Second by Councilwoman Clark. Is there any questions, any? Anything we need to discuss about this? Not all in favor signify by saying aye, raising the right hand, this will be the third. All right, Lisa Wagner, public here in the second reading ordinance to amend the officials zoning map of Jasper County transfer two properties. Tax map number oh four, five, oh, 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 one, oh, four, seven, oh, four, five, oh, 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 one, oh, forty-eight. Reservation is on to the rural preservation zone.
Then, Chairman and Councilmembers, the subject property consists of seven point one acres and five point two, seven acres. The properties are located at nineteen seventy and nineteen seventy-two Floyd Road. The applicant has requested a zoning map amendment to have both of the properties designated as rural preservation. Currently, they're both zoned residential. The applicant's interested in establishing a nonprofit animal rescue mission, which specializes in caring for large farm animals. In accordance with the comprehensive plan, the two thousand and eighteen future land use map identifies this area as rural conservation. Which are areas that seek to promote and protect the character of Jasper County that largely exist today outside of the municipalities. The adjacent parcels are zoned residential and rural preservation. The properties are accessed by Floyd Road, which is a two-lane state maintained road classified as a local road. From a land use perspective, the planning commission recommends approval of the request to have both properties designated as rural preservation. It is, it was advertised probably for a public hearing, and I did receive one comment.
Okay, I'll open the floor, it's time for the public hearing. Lisa, the comment that you got, positive, negative?
It was negative. It was from an adjacent or a nearby property owner. She's not adjacent, but it's nearby. And she doesn't live on the property, she lives in Bluffton, but she does say that she opposes the rezonum because the value of her property will go down and she may not be able to sell it.
Okay. All right. Do we have anybody else for the public hearing, anybody call in? We have anybody on the phone at this time?
No, sir.
No, sir.
If not, then I'm gonna call this public hearing to a close at this time. And I need a motion.
So.
Second reading of the ordinance to be approved or disapproved.
So moved.
So, make some motion, we approve.
Second.
Johnson, second says motion. Is there any other discussion at this time, anybody comments at this time? Okay, I got one, Lisa.
Yes, sir.
This, this, you access this property from Floyd Road. You notify the people that there's a zoning change. Do you put it on Floyd Road or do you put it on this property?
There is a sign right out front of Floyd Road where you turn to access the property right there. And then there is a sign a little further back to identify the property.
Okay. Any other questions, any comment? Not, have a third time a second to approve this. All in favor signify by saying aye, raising your ayes. Ayes. Thank you. Okay, Lisa Wagner, public hearing and second reading of an ordinance to amend defense peninsula plan development, district concept plan map. And it deals with tax map numbers, oh, six, seven, oh, 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 one, oh, five, four, oh, five, five, oh, five, six, and oh, five, eight. Shown on the attached exhibit. That's track one. Peninsula Track One.
The Peninsula Plan Development District was approved by Jasper County Council on August second, two thousand and four. And the Peninsula Track is located along Argent Boulevard. The only development that's taken place there is the Austin Chase and Brook Mills apartment complexes. The remaining property within the Peninsula Track, except for one out parcel, um, is, it's, uh, being called the Peninsula Track One. And the properties is four properties that make that up, and they total three hundred and seventy-four acres. Two hundred and eighty-three acres are uplands. The applicant's requested to amend the concept map for the Peninsula PDD in order to change the arrangement of the land uses. So on the screen, you see the older concept plan. And, um, what they propose is to reduce the commercial area, eliminate the business park and light industrial area, and replace it with a variety of multifamily and single-family uses. Uh, the developer intends to develop the property in accordance with the density that was already approved in two thousand and four. So the concept plan map, it sets forth the general scope of the development. In addition to the concept plan map, the development of the property is controlled by other provisions of the PDD standards and development agreement. The land use areas are indicated on the concept plan map. Um, they're not intended to be rigid, exact boundary lines for future land use and for improvements, however, the PDD standards and development agreement must be strictly adhered to. Uh, prior to development of the property, the applicant must receive master plan and development plan approval. As such, uh, the planning commission has reviewed this, and they recommend approval of the request to amend the concept plan map, which you see on the screen now. And I've not received any comments for a public hearing. Uh, however, the applicants are watching tonight on YouTube, and they've sent a phone number. If you have any questions, uh, for them, we could reach out and call them.
Okay. So I'm opening it for a public hearing this time. Is anybody on the phone at this time? Nobody on the phone?
No, sir, they're not on the phone unless you have questions. Then we can call them.
Okay. Uh, so did you say you had somebody had called, Lisa?
No, no, on this one, I've not received any comments. We, uh, posted this property. We put an ad in the paper, and we notified everybody within the entire boundary that's within five hundred feet of it. And, um, the applicants are watching live on YouTube, and if you have any questions for them, we can call them.
Okay. All right, no comment, no phone numbers, nobody call?
No, sir.
At this time, I'm gonna, public hearing will be closed. And I need a motion that we accept this as the second reading of the ordinance twenty twenty twenty-seven to amend Peninsula Plan Development District Concept Plan Map. I have motion that we accept.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and made by Councilman Johnson and, uh, Councilwoman Clark, seconded.
No, you-
We have any discussion-
Mr. Chairman, it wa- that wasn't moved by Councilman Johnson, that was Councilman Saul's.
Councilman Saul's, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I normally wouldn't-
If we could be, if we could be at a place and it not be virtual, I'd know who it was. I'd seen whose lips were moving. Thank you, though. All right. So motion been made and seconded. Uh, do we have any discussion at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I, I feel like when you call for public hearing, Dr. Carey might have been speaking on this subject. Uh, it's almost like you go to church and you're feeling not so good about something, and, um, and the preacher acts like he's preaching right at you. Um, well, I think, I think, um, Professor Carey was preaching right at this. We've, you know, he says we need less residential and more commercial. And I'm not big on telling people what to do with their property, but they asked for the right to do it the way they got permitted, and now they changing their mind in a way that's negative to the county. That industrial park would be great, and the commercial on the front would be great, and the residential maybe not so great.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Okay. I got a question, Lisa. You said that the whole three hundred and seventy-four acres that they're changing is going from commercial, a light industrial, to residential, right?
Um, they didn't continue to have the track on the front, um, that's in red you see on this map on the screen. That would be commercial. Uh, the area behind them is, um, well, I'm sorry, that's, so this is showing apartment complexes, um. So they, they're proposing to reduce the, um, commercial. And then the rest of it would be a mix of different types of residential uses. And in the development agreement that was approved in two thousand and four, uh, basically that agreement had, uh, densities that they're allowed to have, and so what they're proposing does not exceed the densities. It's not increasing what was originally approved in two thousand and four.
Right? Um, any other comments? No other comments? So at this time, I, uh, we have a first and second. If we approve this, uh, all in favor? Signify by saying aye, raising your right hand.
Aye.
Okay. Li- Lisa?
Yes, sir.
Let me give you a thought. Maybe, maybe we should get these folks to come in and talk with us.
I'm sure we could do that. We could set up a conference call, a Zoom, or we could meet with them.
Yeah.
I'm not meeting with them. I mean, but y'all can go ahead, and I'm not doing no face-to-face meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, my Zoom keep-
I meant, I meant whether Zoom or what, you know?
Yeah, well, yeah, that-
A virtual meeting with them or something.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My, my internet connection keeps going in and out. What, I, I didn't get to see or, or what happened with the vote or what's going on. Could you-
Well, we gotta-
Catch me up real-
You voted, you voted to accept, but nobody seconded that motion.
Okay.
Nobody seconded that motion.
Nobody second what motion?
The motion I've already made. Did you not second? Did you say you're not gonna? What did you say, Barbara?
I second it. You, then you said something about meeting with the people. And I- if you're talking about-
Motion was made and seconded, you're right, you're right. Then you said you don't wanna meet with them.
Yeah, you said something about meeting with them.
I'm sorry, Barbara.
Well, did we vote on it?
I apologize. So the motion been made and seconded. All in favor? Signify by saying aye and raising your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I apologize, I can't see everybody because the map of, the map on the screen. So all I know is Marty and Ms. Clark voted.
Okay.
How about Tom and Dr. Brantley and Henry?
I voted.
Did you vote for it, Dr. Brantley?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, so at this time, did I have anybody that opposes?
They.
I'm gonna oppose it, too. If we're gonna listen to Dr. Carey, uh, Tom made a very good point. Still, Lisa, before the third reading, I think that we should talk.
We can arrange that.
Okay. Arrange that for us before the third reading, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay. That was enough. David Teller, consideration of first reading of an ordinance authorized and approved, Multi-County Park Agreement, line between Beaufort County, Jasper County, Project Stone, Garden, Glass, and Bergen.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this, uh, ordinance proposes that you enter into a multi-county industrial park agreement with Beaufort County. All those, they're four separate projects, all identified by those code names as a standard practice. Uh, the code names become company names later in the process. We're asking for you to consider first reading, uh, for this particular ordinance, so we can get the process moving.
Okay, this consideration of first reading ordinance, authorized and approved, Multi-County Park Agreement, and, uh, named the project Stone, Garden, Glass, and Bergen. You have maps, uh, showing you where the property is. Do I have motion that we, uh, accept this as the first reading of this ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Clark? First, and, uh, Councilman Johnson, second. Any other discussion on this first reading? No other discussion? And all in favor signify by saying aye, raising your right hand.
Aye.
Okay. Ayes have it, okay. All right, David Teller, Andy, uh, first reading of an ordinance of Jasper County Council to amend the Jasper County Code of Ordinances, Chapter Three, Animals, by providing for the deletion of existing Chapter Threes.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as you know, uh, currently and for some time, Jasper County has contracted with a nonprofit organization to provide the management for the animal shelter. This, uh, ordinance, uh, Mr. Tetter had drafted as a attempt, uh, for a first reading to amend the county code section, Chapter Three, which deals with that, which we hadn't looked at in quite some time. There's a lot of really dated information in that code that needs to be changed. Uh, a specific, uh, authority to contract with nonprofits is put in there. And, uh, so unless you have any particular questions about some of the edits that he made, the intent was to try to clean up that ordinance and also give us, uh, explicit authority to contract and, uh, and change some of the requirements for when we renegotiate or get into, uh, a contract with a private agency to run the shelter for us, again, when that time comes. So that's what the sum and summary of the ordinance is, and, uh, requesting your first reading of it tonight. And if you have any questions between first and second reading, I'm sure there'll be some tightening up of the document. Uh, we're happy to entertain those individually.
Okay, this first reading of that ordinance, I have motion that we accept.
So move.
Second.
Been made by Councilman Saul's and seconded by Councilwoman Clark. Any other discussion on this matter?
Actually, Councilman Johnson, Henry.
Marty, I'm sorry.
Hey, it's okay, uh, Tom and I sound just alike, I know.
That's right, that's right, okay.
My internet keeps going out, so if y'all lose me and I pop back on, I don't know what's going on.
All right, thank you, Marty. My motion been made by Councilman Saul's and seconded by Councilwoman Clark. Is there any other discussion on this matter tonight? No other discussion? Everybody in favor signify by saying aye, raising your right hand. Ayes, any ayes? Ayes have it, okay. Okay, this time, new business, Danny Lucas, Risen Claudine Airport Funding Allocation, Phases One through Four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and to the council. At this time, Mr. Fulson wanted me to bring forward to you a discussion and a findings for the funding allocations that actually include pre-phase one, phase one through phase four. And this would cover fiscal years twenty thirteen through twenty nineteen for the development of the Risen Claudine Airport. Uh, Mr. Fulson, do you have the slides?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you will, uh, show page one. So this funding allocation, uh, update provides to you the fiscal years, as I said before, twenty thirteen through twenty nineteen, uh, the funding sources for the monies that were spent, uh, the actual allocation and the actual activities. And so for this development of the airport, there were only three funding sources. There were either the Federal Aviation Administration, South Carolina, uh, Aeronautics Commission, or, and/or Jasper County. So in the year twenty thirteen, uh, hundred and two thousand dollars, hundred and two thousand forty-five dollars spent by the, uh, Aeronautics Commission for South Carolina and Jasper County on the airport layout plan. Now, this is pre-phase one, so, uh, there was no federal spending on this because at this time, uh, the airport was a non-standard airport and was ineligible for federal funding. So in order to bring it into, uh, compliance, it will be first necessary to create an airport layout plan. Uh, in concert with that, there was environmental assessment done as well as new runaway public hearings. The new runway public hearing was required because the county basically is building a new airport on the campus of the old airport. And so we're currently operating under the twenty fourteen conditional airport layout plan that was done by the Baker Group. And it will be necessary for us to, uh, apply for and receive FAA uh, approval of a new airport layout plan moving forward after phase four, uh, is complete. Now also, uh, be mindful that an airport layout plan is a critical document that is necessary, uh, to be included in the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems. It's a planning tool, a regulatory tool, and an enforcement tool. So you see there the spending for the fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and twenty fifteen. Now, uh, you see there in fiscal year twenty fifteen, there was, uh, about one million six hundred thousand odd dollars spent on land acquisition. Uh, that was for ten properties that comprised two hundred and fourteen point two acres. Uh, let's go ahead and say at this point in time, the original airport was about seventy acres. And then, uh, the property that was acquired for the new airport is two hundred and fourteen acres. So currently, the airport now comprises about two hundred and eighty-five acres. Next page, please. So you see the spending there in the year twenty sixteen was a continuation of land acquisition, and then the beginning of, uh, navigation easement acquisitions. Uh, there were forty-four navigation easements, uh, for a total of a hundred and fifty-four point six acres. Now, these navigation easements are on the north end of the airport, uh, where Runway One Eight is. And so you see the total federal funding, uh, and state funding and Jasper County funding for pre-phase one was in the amount of three million four hundred fifteen thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars. Page three, please. Now we move into Phase One, which included demolition, clearing and grubbing, uh, mask grading and drainage, and site preparation for the new runway, which is runway, again, Runway One Eight Three Six, along with a taxiway system. A phase one through four, uh, this is the real beginning of the, uh, ninety percent reimbursement funding by the Federal Aviation Administration, although that includes, uh, pre, uh, land purchases also. So the year twenty fourteen, uh, for Phase One, you see design services and the preparation of construction plans. Uh, no grant funding in the year twenty fifteen, year twenty sixteen. Year 2016, again, you see about six point five million dollars in construction funds, uh, which is five point eight from the Federal Aviation Administration, about, uh, three hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars from the State Aeronautics Commission, and three hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars in construction from Jasper County in the year 2016 for Phase One. Next page, which is phase, uh, page four. Uh, the year 2017, uh, no additional funding. And so the total cost for Phase One, about six point seven billion dollars. Again, with ninety percent of that being a Federal Aviation Administration of funding, five percent, uh, from the state and five percent from Jasper County. Phase Two is the actual construction of the three thousand two hundred foot runway and taxiway system. If you recall, we had a, uh, basically a ribbon cutting for the completion of Phase Two, which was the initial new runway, again, which is three thousand two hundred feet. And you see there some additional, uh, spending there in the year 2016. Again, ninety percent federal, five percent state, five percent county. Next page, please, page five. And so you will see there the total cost of Phase Two, about five million four hundred sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars for Phase Two. Moving along to Phase Three, that was the actual construction of the additional one thousand feet of runway and a taxiway. Uh, so that brings the total to our current, uh, certified total of four thousand two hundred feet on the runway. Now, there are also improvements to existing taxi lanes, uh, on Terminal South, the existing, uh, old airport, what we call a legacy section. And then for connections of those taxi lanes to the new runway and the parallel taxiway, uh, way Alpha. Uh, and then paving, runway, taxiway, lighting, and signage in Phase Three. So you will see there in the year 2016, there was apron, uh, pavement rehabilitation and construction phasing. Uh, when it says construction Phase Three ongoing, what that really means at this point is that, uh, the construction is complete, but we're in the grant closeout stage with a few minor things, uh, to complete. Next page, page six. So this gives you a graphical representation, uh, where you see the turquoise, that's the additional, uh, one thousand feet on the runway. And then you see also the additional, uh, length on the taxiway A or taxiway Alpha. The green sections are the linkages, uh, between the new runway and the old runway that we converted, uh, to taxiway Bravo. Okay, and then the taxi lane linkages to the hangar layout there on Terminal, uh, South. Next page, which will be page seven. Now this gives you an aerial photograph of what the prior page, uh, just showed you. You see there the new runway, and you see those darker colors there would be new runway as well as, uh, taxiway Alpha, and then those taxi lane linkages, then that bright strip there, uh, that's parallel to the hangers, that's the old runway, uh, three dash two one, which had a northeast, uh, northwest, northeast-southeast, uh, orientation. So we converted the old runway into, uh, a taxiway Bravo. Next page, which will be eight. No additional allocation of fundings in the year 2017, or in the year 2018. Then in the year 2019, you see FAA grants of eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, uh, grant of forty-four thousand dollars, and then the matching Jasper County five percent, and also forty-four thousand dollars, which was the, uh, closure of, as I said earlier, the existing, oh, the old runway three dash two one, and then the simultaneous opening of the new runway, uh, at thirty-two hundred feet, which is now, as I say, full length at four thousand two hundred feet. Next page, page nine. So you will see there the same formula of about ninety percent funding from the, uh, Federal Aviation Administration, about five percent funding from the state, and five percent funding from Jasper County. So the total cost for Phase Three was two million eight hundred eight thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars. Then moving on to Phase Four, which we have just, uh, completed, uh, you will find a new terminal apron, and you may have seen when you passed there along Gray's Highway, the, um, the barricade barrels there for the new access road that gets you into, uh, what we call, uh, Terminal North. So Phase Four was the new, uh, Terminal Apron. That apron measures two hundred and two feet by four hundred and twenty feet for a total of, uh, eighty-four thousand, uh, feet for that new apron, so that will greatly enhance, um, our ability to park transient aircraft. That apron also has, um, also has tie downs for thirteen aircraft. So again, uh, moving into Phase Four, uh, which we have just, uh, pretty much completed, uh, there was, um, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in design services, uh, in the year 2017, no monies allocated in the year 2018. We're currently in the grant closeout phase. Uh, in the year 2019, two point seven million dollars of Federal Aviation money, uh, for Phase Three B and Phase Four. Uh, this is on page ten, uh, hundred and fifty thousand, uh, state money, hundred and fifty thousand, uh, Jasper County money, again, ninety percent federal, five percent state, five percent, uh, Jasper County for three million, uh, two thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars. So, um, Phase Four spending total is three million two hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Page eleven, next page. So there you see, uh, the actual Phase Four construction. Uh, the orange section there is where the new ramp is, and then new ramp links to taxiway Alpha and to the new runway one eight three six. Said before, that new ramp is about eighty-four thousand square feet. The purple is the area where the proposed terminal will be. And that terminal is, uh, about seven thousand square feet. Uh, and then the blue section is the actual access road, uh, one way in, one way out. Uh, we just finished installing new gates, uh, around the security fencing and so forth, uh, just in the last ten days or so. Uh, and then you see that access road ties into US two seventy-eight Gray's Highway. Next page. So the next page just gives you a, a view of the new lift station and, uh, waterworks, uh, for the Terminal North area there. Uh, next page, please. So my conclusion of the funding allocation for Phases One through Four, including the pre-phase one, total Federal Aviation Administration funding nineteen million three hundred fifteen thousand fifteen dollars. Total state funding, one million two hundred fourteen thousand five hundred nineteen dollars. Total Jasper County funding, one million one hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars. For a total, uh, cost for Phase One through Four, including, uh, pre-phase one. Total cost of the project so far, twenty-one million dollars. So it's twenty-one million seven hundred and four thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. So again, we want to bring this information to you, to provide you and the public a rundown of the allocations and the money that's have, the monies that have been spent so far on the, uh, on the airport. Now, of course, we're far from finished. Uh, as we brought to you, uh, on the, the last council meeting on October fifth, we brought to you the work authorization for professional services for our consultant to do the design work for one of the items, uh, for Phase Five. So we were able to unofficially launch Phase Five because we got that, uh, hundred and two thousand dollar grant from the Federal Aviation Administration. But, uh, there are a lot more items on Phase Five for us to bring forward to you. And so pretty soon, we'll be asking you to approve a, uh, automated weather observation station funding under Phase Five. Uh, and that's a ninety percent federal, uh, funding, five percent state, and about five percent, uh, Jasper County. Uh, we'll also be coming forward with the, uh, fuel farm. This is the actual, this is not our actual fuel farm, but this is an example of what it would look like that we described, uh, on, on October fifth of the, uh, taxiway connections and, and apron connections. Uh, so this is a depiction of what it would look like, but this is not ours. Ours is a twelve unit, uh, T-hanger, uh, complex. So, uh, we'll be bringing forward to you in Phase Five, uh, plans and asking for your approval for a fuel farm. Uh, two twelve thousand gallon tanks, one for a hundred octane low lead avgas, and another twelve thousand gallon tank for J A fuel. Uh, we'll be coming forward, and, uh, FAA is, uh, hard in the way with working on our RNAV GPS instrument approach for runway one eight three six. And we hope to have an announcement soon, uh, either that we don't know whether they're gonna fly the approach or whether they're gonna do a desktop model of it. But COVID has set, uh, them and everybody else back quite a bit. But anyway, we'll be coming forward with the RNAV GPS approach, uh, hopefully very, very soon. And then perhaps, uh, a corporate hangar also would also be included, um, in, in Phase Five. So we got into the very, very exciting stage, which is Phase Five. Uh, you know, beyond the runway, the rest of it is just infrastructure stuff. The Phase Five is now bringing us to the, uh, most exciting portion of it. So stay tuned for additional requests, uh, for this exciting project, the Jasper County Airport, which we know as Rizland Claude Dean Airport. So thank you, I, I, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lucas, we appreciate that update. And, uh, does any council member have any questions for Mr. Lucas at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, one question if I may, please, sir.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, uh, Mr. Lucas, how pleased are you with the progress from your point of entry to this point?
Uh, Dr. Brainly, I am very pleased with what we've been able to coddle together so far. When I say we, I mean, uh, the, under the leadership of Mr. Fulham and our consultant, Hope Consulting, who took over from Baker, the Baker Group, uh, who did the prior work back in, uh, twenty thirteen. Um, and all of our contractors, we've been working really hard over the last month and a half with a punch list on our contractors. So I spend a lot of time out there on the ground with our inspector as well as the contractors. So I'm quite pleased what we've done so far. However, uh, we will need to really pick up the pace and get the, uh, fuel farm and the, uh, uh, the automated weather station, Terminal Building and so forth done because otherwise we'll have tumbleweeds growing over there on the, uh, Terminal North. And we're getting a lot of inquiries, uh, from people who want to bring in, uh, corporate aircraft as well as who want to do business here, uh, and others who are looking for hangar space and so forth. So, uh, we're getting a lot of, uh, people in it. The demand is coming from Bluffton, uh, Beaufort County, uh, Chatham County, uh, a little bit from Effingham County, uh, also in Georgia as well as Chatham County. Uh, so we're getting, um, a lot of inquiries, uh, on a daily basis.
Very good, thank you, sir. Any other comments, or any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted just to commend, uh, our Assistant County Administrator Lucas on the job he's doing. He's always very detailed and, uh, in his presentations and very informative. And I know he's put a lot of time and effort into it, and I just want to thank him for what he's doing. That airport is very, very important, not only to the town, but the county and our region as far as an economic impact. And the money will infuse into our economy and commerce and, uh, the aeronautic, uh, arena, uh, companies will be wanting to move here. They already are to set up shop, create jobs, and invest in our community. And, and, uh, the job that he's doing is, is, is so important. Um, and I just want to thank him for what he's, what he's doing and what he, uh, you know, has on the books for our future.
Thank you, Mr. Salz.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Johnson?
No comments, good job, keep it up.
Thank you, sir.
And I also want to thank you, you did a good job. And we know that, uh, when you bring Phase Five, you're gonna be able to bring it and show us exactly how we're gonna pay for Phase Five. Thank you very, very much.
We have the cost in there, too.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, may I, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Lucas to expand on something? It was a great presentation about the existing construction and how far we've come. Uh, but the business level at the airport is really astounding. And it, it is a good testament to build it and they will come. And if you could, uh, it's, it's getting to a business level out there now that, uh, we have a strategy to push some things out via social media and press release, uh, sort of trying to get to the local pilot community to explain to them, uh, procedures and, uh, ensure safety during the construction. Uh, we could allow Mr. Lucas to speak to that for just a minute, that'd be helpful.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Fulham. Um, we try to notify the existing, uh, pilot base, uh, through, uh, our email blast when we can. Also, but, uh, they as well as any other pilots should always be aware that if anything, uh, disruptive were to happen or we need to rearrange anything, that would come in the form of an actual notice to airmen because that goes out to all pilots throughout the country, not just, uh, the local people, but anybody who may be impacted by the airport. But, uh, we are getting a lot of business there. As a matter of fact, I talked to one King Year, uh, flight crew from Houston just last week, and they came in to bring some people in for golf. And the pilot was telling me that unfortunately they had to go to Savannah and pick up fuel, uh, because of course we didn't have fuel, so that was three hundred and seventy gallons, uh, that they were going to unload, uh, or upload in Savannah. And we have plenty of other cases like that where people are asking, uh, about the fuel situation.
Right.
So we're hoping to bring forward these items as quickly as possible.
Great work.
Mr. Lucas, you were talking about, um, cost. Will the fuel system eventually pay for itself?
Uh, yes, sir, it will because, uh, the, the fuel farm, of course, is a revenue generating project. And so that you have to, uh, for the short term and the long term, cost of fuel in such a way that you, uh, amortize the debt.
We're gonna have the lowest fuel of any airport around. That way it'll help with our volume and commerce people who want to use Rizland Airport. So we go, we got a plan.
Amen.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, any other questions? Okay, thank you again, Mr. Lucas, for what you're doing. And we just want to, you to continue on and get it, get it all done, okay? Thank you very much. All right, at this time, Kim Burgess, Marsh Cove Fire Station, presentation of bids and request for authorization to execute contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, good evening, council members. Uh, Jasper County advertised for sealed bids for the construction of Marsh Cove on the, on, uh, the county's vendor registry webpage, on the South Carolina Business Opportunity webpage, and in the Jasper Sun. The bids were due on August thirteenth, at which time the county received seven bids. The bids have been reviewed by the architect, Woods Dandy Architects, and it has been determined that there are enough funds budgeted to build the three bay option. A meeting with each of the two lowest bidders, C Merrill Construction LLC and IP Builders was held to review the scope of the bids. Additionally, references were requested and received from C Merrill Construction, and two of those references were contacted and provided very positive feedback of their experience with, with. feedback of their experience with C Merrill. The architect is preparing a formal recommendation of C Merrill Construction to be awarded the contract. And it should also be noted that C Merrill was or is the apparent low bidder. There are many contracts that will need to be awarded in relation to this construction project, including, but not limited to, the general contractor and a construction management inspection services company that we currently have out for RFP. The Office of Rural Development of the United States Department of Agriculture must review the general contractor contract before it can be executed by the county and the contractor. And it will also be reviewed by the county attorney prior to submission to the USDA. At this time, the staff would like to request that the council accept the bid of C Merrill Construction LLC not to exceed one million, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, including alternate number two, which is doors, plastic laminate, and alternate number four, impact windows, if those are agreed upon, and authorize the county administrator to enter into all necessary contracts for this project, not to exceed the project budget of one million, eight hundred, eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
Okay.
A question, Mr. Chairman?
Let's go ahead. First, I need a motion to accept this low bid. I hear a motion that we accept this bid.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Brantley and seconded by Councilman Salz. Now we'll open it for any discussion or any questions.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, how many bids were received for this project?
Seven.
Just said seven.
Seven bids.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I wanted to ask Ms. Burgess, what was the second bid? What was the difference between the low bidder and the second bid? How close were they?
They were, I'm looking at it here, I believe they were approximately, I mean, I'm going to do some math, eighty thousand, did I hear? It was IP Builders at one million, three eighty-six, and one million, three forty-five. If you take all of, so it's forty-one thousand if you take into consideration all of the alternates. So if you don't, it's about fifty thousand.
Where is C Merrill out of?
They are in Georgia. They're in.
You know what I'm fixing to say. I don't like paying nobody from Georgia to do a South Carolina job when we've got a contractor right here in our backyard. It was born here, raised here, and has family from Jasper County. So.
That we have.
To work this out, because I don't want a company from Georgia to do this work.
Well, I will say they've done, you know, work locally.
They've done anything. Yeah, that doesn't make any difference to me. They're from Georgia. I ain't paying nobody from Georgia to do South Carolina work in Jasper County. Then we got contractors from Jasper County, have family here in Jasper County, and it's done work for us. And not doing it.
Yeah.
So is there any? Y'all can go back and talk to the next lowest bidder to see what they can do to sharpen their pencils so that they can get the contract?
That's illegal.
Yeah, no, sir, we normally could.
I don't know what the process is.
We could with another bid. We could use our local procurement. We have a local friendly procurement provision, but we can't. When we're using federal money, we can't do that.
Federal money, you can't. Right.
So you can't send it back out to bid? Nothing? We can't do it? Even without the local companies, we can't do that?
That's a waste of time.
No other, there's no alternative whatsoever. Somebody.
Marty, we've been waiting a long time.
Henry, I understand all that, but I just want to answer to my question.
From what I understand from discussions with the USDA, we do, we have to go with the low bidder unless there is absolutely some reason not to. I mean, it has to be, we have to justify, but we have to justify that. And they review the contractors, you know, their capability, their resume, so, which we've done that as well as with our reviews of the scope of the work.
Well, I know what Henry was going to say, and we've all put a lot of time and effort into Marsh Cove, and we understand the impact it'll have on many residences to help them with the safety and security of their homes, their families, and reduction of their insurance premiums by a better protection class. So I guess I obviously don't want to hold anything up, but I'll vote in favor of it. But I'm not happy about sending money to a Georgia company when we can do it right here. And I understand the federal procurement process, but it stinks.
Ain't nobody, ain't nobody agrees that we shouldn't use local people all we can. But when it comes to government contracts, it kind of takes it out of our hand. Am I right, Andy?
I think that was well said. Yes, sir.
So.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to make my piece.
Right.
Well, I'll make a motion. Do we need a, we already made a motion. Let's just get it over.
Motion been made and seconded. Any other discussion? No other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye, raising the right hand.
Aye.
Any names? Okay.
Thank you.
Cash.
Thank you.
Okay. Old business, we have none. We take care of business and get it over with. So we have no old business. Okay, council members comment? Start with Mr. Salz. Councilman Salz.
I want to thank Ms. Lynn Tyndall with Keep Jasper Beautiful and her program that she does at the Blue Hare and Nature Center. She's obtained some grants recently, and that's through her hard efforts and hard work in the Blue Bucket Campaign with different businesses with that challenge to clean up Jasper County. She's doing a phenomenal job. She's been invited to go to Washington DC to represent Jasper County in the program that she's implemented on the national level with, I think it's Palmetto Pride Group. And I don't know if y'all checked Gmail or not, she sent an email thanking council members. But she's done a phenomenal job, really needs to be recognized for her efforts, what she's done in that program. And I just want to tell her thank you and how much I, and I'm sure the council and our community appreciates what she's doing to educate our community on litter and the effects of it, and just, you know, cleaning up our county. Not only from an environmental standpoint, but from an economic development standpoint, when companies come into our county and they're looking at industrial parts and available sites, they look at our county, the standard of living, the cleanliness of it or lack of in certain areas. And it has a big effect on people wanting to relocate here. They look at how the residents take pride in their county. And she's doing a phenomenal job, and I just want to recognize her for that as well. And also, I have some very close friends who are in the high-risk category that now have been diagnosed with COVID. They're very concerned and worried. And I want to just ask for everybody to keep those people, I won't mention any names, but just keep that family in their prayers, as well as everyone else that's been affected by this. But especially those friends of mine that I'm thinking about tonight, if y'all will keep them in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
Um, I concur with what Marty said and really don't have much to add to it. If anybody doesn't know, we lost a character in Levy, Chief Doug Graham, and. Anyway, to say more than that would take longer than, longer than we've got. So, and I've joined with you in wishing the best to anybody that's got exposure to the virus and, and I hope everybody's being careful.
Okay. Councilman Brantley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we are into this presidential election, I trust that everyone electorizes his or her civic duty by casting their votes for the candidates of their choice. And I pray that everyone will remain safe. God bless. Thank you, sir.
Amen.
Councilwoman Clark?
I don't have anything to say. Bid to God speak.
Okay. I also want to say that I agree with Marty a hundred percent when it comes to trying to do local business. Ain't nobody wants to do local business no more than I do, but sometimes taken out of our hands, the federal government. But anyhow, COVID-19, I want to tell you that I really, I've had some very close family members that had the virus. And I'm gonna tell you that it's not, it's not a pleasant thing for anybody to have. My prayer for you is to be very safe. Try to stay away from as much of it as you can. And let's try to get this country back to normal. I don't look forward to get back to normal anytime real soon. We just got to work through it. My prayers is with everybody that's affected by it. And I pray for everybody in the county anyway, each and every day. So please, let's be careful. And don't drop our guards too quick. I see a lot of people dropping guards too quick, like not wearing masks, having crowds of people around them all the time. So please, 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 don't drop your guards too quick. Okay? This time, administrators report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, just a couple of quick items for you. One, concerning the impact fee proposal that we spoke of at your last meeting, just wanted to update you that we did have a good meeting with the superintendent of schools. The school board is on board with us and partnering to potentially look at this proposal to study potential impact fees in Jasper County. We are working through the details of that with the proposer, Tishler Vice. The school district is a little ahead of us in that they have a firm that's currently doing a demographic study and facilities plan for them. And so we have Mr. Vice talking with that firm, because what that actually means is the scope for the Tishler Vice proposal will probably be adjusted, because some of that work is being done by this other firm. So as soon as we pull that together, we will adjust the scope, and we will come back to you. Thank you for your support in that effort. I also wanted to report, this is kind of fun. Every now and then, we get to see the good work that you've done, how it really has helped. When we have an economic development prospect, often as part of the package to attract a firm, the Department of Commerce will issue a grant for an outfit of an existing building. And you may remember the business, we had it named Project Pioneer back in 2014, I think, which was KBRS Inc., which is a custom shower pan company. They produce those down at the Hardyville area. Mr. Salz was intimately involved in that one, I know. But they came in and they promised to create thirty-three new jobs and spend about two and a half million dollars. And the council granted them a special source revenue credit, which allowed them to get to an assessment ratio of six percent. And also, the county helped them with the grant to do the outfits. Well, I'm pleased to say we got word back from Commerce that the grant has been closed out. So all that's really done, yeah, they ended up spending almost two point seven million dollars. And instead of creating thirty-three jobs, created fifty-eight new jobs. So these things are very tedious, but I'm going to have to do some work to make a list of all those, what I call small to medium companies that you have approved and that have really come to being in the last decade. There are just so many of them, and they do make a tremendous impact. I wanted to share that with you. The only other thing I had to offer was to try to see if Chief Wells would provide us with the latest and greatest COVID-19 update as far as our numbers for Jasper County.
Yes, sir. Our current numbers. Chairman and council members, South Carolina was at a ten point nine percent positivity rate. And that date range was from October seventh through yesterday, October eighteenth. Comparatively speaking, Jasper County is at six percent for that same date range. There were seven hundred and fifty tests completed within Jasper County. And in the lower left-hand corner of the screen, we can see how the past fourteen days of positive tests have tracked within Jasper County. I'll be sending that through the administrator and then onward to you. As requested, in the lower right-hand corner, these are the offerings of COVID testing. Again, the South Carolina Department of Health conducted testing today from nine AM to three thirty. They'll also be doing it again Wednesday from nine to three thirty. That seems to be the trend that will go through the end of the month and quite possibly into November. They are asking that you call for an appointment, and they are doing pediatric testing as well. And again, that is free of charge to our citizens. And with that, I'll conclude this report, pending any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that, you know, I serve on the hospital board now and for quite a while. And we monitor the COVID patients and the rate of positive tests, et cetera, here in Jasper County. And that number has been decreasing significantly over the past several weeks, to the point where I don't believe we have any COVID patients in our ICU or any beds at the hospital today. So that's some positive news as well.
I can, Councilman Salz, I recall. Okay. Any other comments? Fosham, any, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I think it's time to make a motion to.
We adjourn.
Ah. Adjourn. Everybody in favor signify by saying aye. Cut your.
Good night.
Good night.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.